Best to me.
Yeah, look, I think that's the, I think that's the thing all of us miss most these days is just not being around people.
Oh, there's Ronak. Okay.
Okay. Nina.
Nina there?
I am. How are you?
Yes, indeed.
All right.
We're ready.
I think we're ready, Barbara.
Okay.
Are you ready?
The meeting is called to order at seven oh one P M. Please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God. And the God. Invisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Well.
All right. Notice of this meeting was emailed to the Heraldus, the Record Office of County Clerk, and posted on the college, the College Committee, posted on the P C C website on July fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Roll call.
Alumni Rep Greco, Trustee Duhan, Trustee Esche, Trustee Marco.
Here.
Trustee Moody.
Present.
Trustee Poe. Trustee Rodriguez.
Here.
Trustee Smith. Trustee Trevetti.
Here.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Here.
Chairman Nutter.
Okay, do we have any corrections to the minutes? Hearing no corrections, can I have a motion on resolution number one, approval of the June fifteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
So. A second.
Second.
A second.
Okay.
I'm rehearsing. Trustee Marco.
Yes.
Trustee Moody. Okay, Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Presentation by the chairman.
Yep, let me, uh. You know, obviously, the, the college is, is not different than many of the other organizations out there. You know, when, when all of this senseless violence happened several weeks ago, and it was only the latest examples of it. Um, yeah, I think our college community took it very hard. Um, you know, like everything else, I think I might, I might serve on a lot of boards and every, every one of the boards issued, you know, a statement and a resolution. And, you know, I think we were determined at the college, you know, a lot of people started contacting me and we were talking. And, you know, people wanted to do something, you know, people felt, you know, what, what is going to be the college's response? What, what can we possibly do? We, we have one of the most diverse colleges in the United States. Um, you know, and I think we have a special responsibility and, you know, different groups started developing resolutions and started doing things. And, you know, I turned to Nina. Uh, as, as you all, you all know, Nina Alsbrook, who is our, uh, Chair of our English Department, but also the, Chair of our Academic Council, President of our Academic Council. And that's, you know, in, in colleges, that's, that's the governance group. There are, there are people who do something. And Nina and I spoke and, um, she enthusiastically took on the position of, uh, that she, she was going to get the college community together. And, um, I think called the first ever academic council meeting in June. Uh, and, and June thirtieth, the academic council met and, um, we had, I think, record attendance for the meeting. I, I don't think we've ever had more people show up a, at a meeting. And, um, I'm gonna let Nina take it from there and, uh, discuss what happened.
Thank you so much, President Rose. Um, just for a bit of context, in the middle of this larger COVID nineteen pandemic, the black community was once again thrust into a conversation about systemic oppression and civil rights, right? What is our responsibility, uh, in terms of making sure that society has a certain level of, of respect and appreciation and value for the lives of, of black people? Um, and I think that that conversation was reignited, uh, with the deaths of George Floyd and Rashard Brooks and Breonna Taylor and countless other names that, that I won't go through tonight. Um, but again, President Rose mentioned, there was this, you know, natural pull to feel that with the population we serve, we should be doing something. Um, and there were some informal committee meetings and a conversation with the president. Uh, and what we came up with was that we wanted to speak from the position of the council to show that we were unified in terms of what we wanted to do. Um, but we also wanted to make sure that it was beyond a statement. Um, at Passaic County Community College, we already do so much for so many people. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we were thorough, not in just presenting a statement, but including what we would do, how we felt we could be responsible within that statement for some measure of change. Uh, and at the June thirtieth academic council meeting that the president mentioned, the following resolution was read and adopted. So I'm going to go through it briefly, um, and I thank you so much for the indulgence of your time. Academic Council Resolution to Assess and Address Systemic Inequalities and Provide Equitable Support Measures Within Our College Community. Whereas Passaic County Community College is deeply saddened by the series of disturbing and tragic events that have taken place over the last few weeks related to the violence and injustice towards the black community, including the senseless deaths of Rashard Brooks, George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Aubrey, and countless others. Whereas the college does not see these matters as isolated events, but recognizes the systemic structures that foster race-based discriminatory practices throughout our society. Whereas Passaic County Community College is seeking to live up to our mission statement and institutional goals to fulfill our promise to provide a supportive learning environment for members of the college community and demonstrate we value our diversity because it enriches our learning environment and deepens our respect and appreciation for others. Whereas we recognize we cannot achieve our highest purpose without helping our black students to navigate any barriers to their pursuit of higher education. Be it resolved, the academic council, as the shared governance body of Passaic County Community College, will help to assess and improve where necessary P C C C's institutional approach to identifying, recruiting, educating, and supporting marginalized populations with special emphasis on black students and their success within our college community. Steps to instituting systemic change will include creating an ad hoc committee to assess the current climate of diversity within various facets of the P C C C college community, disseminating the findings of that committee to applicable parties on campus to provide guidance for recruitment and retention activities, student programming, and professional development aimed at spurring systemic changes within our institution, fostering a platform at every academic council meeting for the committee and its collaborators to share with the college community the progress being made on any associated endeavors or challenges that might be mitigated for progress to move forward. Uh, we presented this to the full council in attendance, uh, and it was approved overwhelmingly. And now I submit it for your review, inquiry, and approval. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Professor. Are there any questions in the Board of Trustees? At this time, President Rose, I would like to entertain a motion from one of our trustees to endorse the academic council.
Now we can.
Am I on?
Do we have?
Yep, I think Trustee Duhan is trying to speak.
Okay, I, I just had a problem with the word inequality that you presented a few minutes ago. If I recall correctly, we are exceptional when it comes to, uh, educating all diverse people in this county. Probably we have more black people in this community college than any other type.
And I can acknowledge that, sir.
I'm sorry, I, I just object to that word.
Um, it's no problem. And this is why in the opening part of the resolution, when we get to be it resolved, it says that we will help to assess and improve where necessary. It's not to imply that that particular issue exists in Passaic County Community College, but moreover, to say that we will be looking at the entirety of the issue. And where we find issues, we will make improvements as necessary. If that we find is not an issue where there is improvement needed, then of course, that's not an area that we would necessarily make any adjustments.
That's good, because this college is tremendous when it comes to all people. Don't forget it.
Thank you, sir.
Any other, any other questions?
Hearing Nina, this is Trustee Marco. I'm in agreement with the, uh, sentiments expressed in the academic council resolution. I feel that the board should endorse the resolution. Uh, I move that the trustees endorse it and, uh, hope there's a second.
A second.
Second. Everyone, would you like to roll call?
Roll call, yep.
Trustee Duhan, I'm muted.
The word, if you take the word inequality out of it, I'll vote for it. If you don't, I'll abstain.
Okay. Trustee Marco.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
He's muted.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nina, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm really, I'm, I'm happy that we're gonna be able to, you know, tell the college community that, you know, all of the groups that govern it have endorsed this.
Thank you so much.
All right, let me just give you a.
No, it's your turn.
No, okay, good. I've just, I, I just wanted to give everybody a little update on, uh, where, where things are right now. Um, they're changing every day, but, uh, you know, where things are, I thi- I think last month we were a little more optimistic, uh, about what we were gonna be able to do this fall. Um, you know, we were hoping to have, you know, certainly, we, we had no intention of getting back to normal. But, you know, at one point, we were talking maybe thirty percent of our sections would be able to be held on campus. Truthfully, I'd love to have this meeting back on campus and not, not, not be doing it this way. But it's, it's, it's becoming clearer and clearer to us as time goes on. You know, that we're, we're not there yet. Um, you know, I, I, I meet weekly with the, the state and get, get the guidance from them. And, you know, un- until we get to what, what, what they consider phase three, um, we, we can't even have in-person classes thi- this fall. Um, we're hoping that by the early, early September, we will get to there. You know, we had to put out a schedule, you know, we've developed a schedule where about ten percent of our courses will be in person. Uh, and the, the other ninety percent will continue to be either online or done during, using this platform of, of using Zoom. Um, it, it's, it's not perfect, not the way we, we certainly want to do things, but there really is no other choice at this point. We did put in a, a wa- for a waiver for, for the state for cer- to do certain things this summer. And it was quite a process we had to go through in order to get it. It was approved. Um, we're, our Public Safety Academy, where we're training EMS and training firemen, um, we are now fully operational there. Um, you know, that came out of necessity. The towns in Passaic County were, you know, desperate for us to begin training of, of firemen. Um, we needed more first responders, EMS, and those types of things. So we have to follow some, you know, very stringent protocols while doing the training, but we have started the training as of last week up there. The other thing that had to happen is our health science students, you know, you, you can't learn to be a nurse totally in a classroom, uh, nor, nor, nor a radiographer or any of those kind of things. You, you have to work in the labs and you have to do things. So we got permission to, you know, re- resume training for our allied health students. It's, uh, we've started that as well. You know, we, we want to, you know, we obviously, we don't want anybody to fall behind. We don't, you know, it, it, it's this, what's happening now is taking a big enough toll on, on everybody as it is. Uh, for our students not to be, you know, to, to have to spend another year wait, waiting to get out into their careers is just, you know, we're, so we're trying everything we can, you know, to be as creative as, as we can to try and make, make sure that our students get through. Um, I would tell you, you, the college community has just been incredibly cooperative. Everybody's working together. Um, I, I, I think we all say, I think we've never worked quite this hard ever. Uh, we, we used to think we spent a lot of hours, but it's, it's incredible. Um, you know, obviously, and, and maybe Trustee Rodriguez could help us here a little. K two twelve has a real direct impact on what we do, you know? We, we know thou- probably close to two thousand of our students are parents themselves and have children in the schools. And obviously, we've always known when, uh, when, when, when our students, uh, they have to take care of their kids first before, before they come to us. So I, I know we have a mixed bag in K twelve.
Yeah, look, uh, you know, uh, we jumped into the call a little bit earlier today when we discussed a little bit about what reopening looks like for schools and uh, obviously, Governor, uh, has permitted, uh, parents to, uh, you know, uh, keep their children at home if they so wish. But, you know, it's, it's a very complicated issue. There's a lot of staff refusing to come in. So we have staff and school, uh, and, uh, you know, what this looks like, uh, come September, uh, you can toss, uh, you know, a bag of balls up in the air and try to catch them all and try to figure it out and, you know. There's a lot, you, you know, I, I think there's still a lot of time between now and September and, you know, what those, what the plan looks like today and what it looks like in September can change quite a bit. So.
Yep.
Interesting.
Yep. So, you know, we are trying to, you know, we, we wanna land on our feet as best we can here. You know, obviously, unlike K two twelve, no one has to come to college in the fall. So, you know, we wanna make sure we're, we're getting the word out, you know, to as many students so they can plan appropriately. We're trying to give them as many different types of options as we can in order to, you know, as, at least what will be permitted, you know, what we think we'll be able to do i- i- in September. And, uh, that's about the best we can do now. You know, we, we have to submit a restart plan to the state. We plan on doing that this week, uh, or early next week at the latest. Uh, people have been working on it. Um, you know, we're, 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 we're doing, you know, we, we have to figure out things like what entrances we're gonna use at the college. You know, are we gonna automatically take temperatures of people coming in? How are we going to ensure that, you know, people do a self-assessment of themselves, you know, before coming to school? What are our protocols for cleaning classrooms? You know, obviously, something like using a computer lab with, with keyboards is something that is, is gonna be, you know, very, very hard for us to do and, you know, maintain, you know, cleanliness. We, we are, as, as I told you last month, we are working on a, on a project where we hope to have a laptop into the hands of every student who needs one, you know, bu- by September. And that's, you know, no easy thing to, to do, but it, it looks like, I, I think we're gonna get there. You know, fortunately, we're even able to use some of the federal funds that, that we have been given to subsidize this for our students. And, you know, when they all have their own computer, things are gonna go a lot easier for, for everybody.
Dr. Rose, the issue in, in some, at, at least in the K through twelve, uh, it's not so much the money in some cases, it's the, uh, buy, uh, the limit. Uh, some of our schools have ordered Chromebooks and they're just back there, you know, uh, so it may not be until October.
Yeah, we, we, we got, we did this early, so we, uh, we, we think we got the supply chain to, to get it done. So we're, we're hopeful, but I know it's, I, I, I wish I bought, uh, Stockton's in Zoom, this platform, and everybody who makes Chromebooks, because you, you, you can't buy them now. They're selling them, you know, bu- by the tens of thousands. Um, you know, so it's.
Dr. Rose, are the staff being provided laptops as well?
Yes. You actually, that was, I, I think that's actually in tonight's packet.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask about. Okay.
Yep. Was that last month, Brad, or tonight?
That's in tonight's packet.
Yep.
I saw it. I just wanted to confirm that it was for staff and for students.
Yes, that, that one is actually for staff. The student one is coming through, uh, is going through the bookstore. So that's not something that you have to approve. That's something, you know, the students are going to pay as a fee, but we're, we'll be subsidizing it through using some of the federal funds that are designated to help support students, you know, during COVID nineteen.
There are some student laptops in the packet tonight. That's for the, uh.
Grants.
Grant, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have one more, I'm sorry.
Please.
Um, so the goal is to have all the students and staff to have laptops in September, correct?
Yes.
So, uh, I saw that on the list tonight to, uh, for purchases, I saw that there was, um, books being purchased from Follett, Follett?
Yeah.
Um, so the goal is to have everything, um, basically virtual. Why are we purchasing books?
Well, students still use books when you're, when you're virtual. I mean, it's, if it is a book, if, if there's a textbook for the course, the students still use it. Um, now, I, it happens that that purchase that is, is in there is not for that. Um, the, these are for, uh, thi- this is authorizing purchases of, we have to go through the bookstore for grants that we have for, for purchasing materials, you know, written, different types of written materials through, throughout the year. So this is not something for, for the start. So this is, this is buying things from Follett. You know, we may or may not spend all of, all of that, but it, it gives you authorization. Steven, you wanna add anything there?
Yeah, um, and pretty much Dr. Rose hit on it. It's really given us the authorization. So what happens is, um, students that have financial aid, they have a credit limit that's sent to the bookstore. So if they want to purchase a book at that particular bookstore, they can. If they don't, the money's just shipped back to the student. So, um, it doesn't mean we'll spend all that money. It's just a, a cap to, we'll spend up to that amount. And it also included in there are departments, like Dr. Rose said, if a department wants to, um, purchase a book, um, they can do that as well. So it doesn't mean we spend all the money. It just gives us a, a nice, um, limit.
Okay, I mean, I know it's different, but like, I was just thinking, because for the K to twelve, we're going, um, we're, all resources digital. So we're not purchasing textbooks because, you know, all the kids are basically learning, um, virtually. So I just wanted to know if that was like the same, uh.
No, I mean, look, we, we are, as, as you've heard before, we're, we're doing this open educational resource project, and I think we're number one in the state. Forty, about forty-four percent of our courses this fall are not going to have any textbooks that they are going to be, but we are providing materials, digital materials to those students. But these courses have actually been converted. You know, it doesn't matter what format they're done, whether they're in the classroom or whether they're done virtually, they, they still have, you know, that's, they, they still have the same materials. So if there is still a textbook for a course, you know, they would use it whether it's online or, you know, remote or in the classroom.
And Steve, the O E R is free, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And that's why there, there are no books. It's using open educational resources.
Well, you say no physical book, but it's a, still a, it's a digital book, right?
Um, it, it, it varies. It, it can be, it, you know, i- i- in some cases, there are open source textbooks which are free and some faculty have used that. Some faculty have developed their own materials, um, which they, you, you know, where they've put together a group of articles, put together. Uh, Nina, I think you're still on the phone. You wanna, you wanna add something there?
So we do O E R, Open Education Resource Materials for Comp One, Comp Two, Public Speaking. Um, these are a lot of our gateway courses for the college. Um, and again, everybody does approach it differently. So for one oh one, we've used open resource materials and we link students to Lumen Learning, Learning's websites and, and we go through different content areas for it that way. Um, I've also developed it for critical thinking because student fees already cover our databases at the college. They already have access to that by virtue of being enrolled. Um, I just went topic by topic and sourced the best articles for what they needed to learn for critical thinking. And I'm always able to bring in, um, new commentary and Ted Talks and things of that nature that can enhance what we're studying, um, in that course. Then you have people like in public speaking, she did find a textbook that was open education. And so they link out to an entire textbook. Um, and so the, the, there's a great variety in how we compile the materials given what's available. Um, for Ian two oh five, which is Intro to Lit, we found an entire textbook that was available, um, to study some of the greats. But there are other courses that are a little bit more niche and you have to be a little bit more hands-on in getting down to the individual topics and just develop that content for yourself.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we will keep you informed if there are any changes. Uh, Mike, you wanna discuss the South Main Auto?
Sure. Uh, so as I indicated in the memo to the board, uh, many years ago, when parking was at such a premium that we auctioned off a space at the, uh, at the annual foundation gala.
We still do that.
Uh, yeah, but, but, but the parking isn't near the premium it was back then.
No, it was not.
We had leased a, a small lot on Van Houten Street, uh, just on the other side of the railroad tracks on Van Houten. Um, and then, of course, we built the parking garage, uh, and the need for parking, uh, dropped. Uh, well, it was more in line with what our supply was. We didn't need the lot anymore, and so we sublet it out. In our lease, we have an option to purchase the property. And in the sublease, we actually are obligated to sell it to the subtenant. And the time for us to exercise the option starts, um, on August fifteenth. And we'd like to get this done sooner rather than later. I've been in contact with the tenant's attorney. They're ready to go. And, uh, I had had before the pandemic sidelined us, I had had contact with the owner's attorney. So everybody's gonna be online, I think, and rather, I don't know if we're gonna need an August meeting or not, hopefully not. Uh, so that's why I wanted to get approval this month from the board so that when August hits, I can start the process without having come back to you or wait until September.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Um, where about on Van Houten is this? Is this, is this the one down, um, uh, near the falls or that's the one that over by?
No, 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 no. This is a small lot. So if you go out our front door on College Boulevard, Van Houten Street and go, uh, past, um.
The railroad track.
The railroad, just past the railroad tracks, get the railroad trestle, and right there on the right is a, is a small lot. It can be more than fifteen or twenty spaces. Um, and, um, and that's where it is.
Oh, okay. Uh, this is not the one in front of, uh, Normanus where?
Oh, no, no.
No, 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 no.
No.
No, 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 no.
We still need that one.
No, no, Dr. Rose has one for that.
Yeah, we got, yeah, that, that, we're not getting rid of that one.
No, 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 this is an isolated, this is a somewhat isolated lot. Moves close enough to service us, but it's, it's not critical now. We're not using.
There was a time, yeah, there was, there was a time we were so desperate for parking. If, if, if there was a lot that we could park three place, three cars at, we, we, we tried to get it. It was, we were that desperate. We, we, we were bussing people down to the lot all the way down on Ellison Street. Um, and we, we just had buses going all day long, bringing people back and forth. It was, it was not a good situation.
Right, right. Remember that. Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Is it worth the two hundred fifty thousand dollars or should we just keep it?
No, we're obligated to sell it.
So we have no choice?
Okay, we have no choice. It's gonna be a pass through. Um, there's, uh, there should be almost no expense to us. We may have to pay a recording fee. Um, because I tried to get the owner to just do a direct transfer to the subtenant. He won't agree to do that. So technically, they're gonna have to deed the property to us. We will deed it to the subtenant. Um, uh, so we may have to pay the cost of that one deed, but that's minimum.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's, by my own opinion would be, it's not, if, if it's worth that, it's not worth a whole lot more than that. Uh,
That's true.
It's a small lot and, and where it's located, you know, you, you can't do anything really there other than park cars. It's, it's, it gets pretty noisy when the trains go by.
Mm-hmm. Got you.
Uh, it's. All right, so we have a lot of purchases on the agenda. That's typical for the month of July. Some of them are, are directly related to, uh, what, what's going on right now and just happy to answer any questions about them. Uh, Trustee Poe talked about some of the laptops that were in there. Um, and there's just lots of other types of things and.
I did have a question.
Please.
Tutor dot com.
Yes.
Is that something that we have used in the past or is it something due to COVID?
No. We, we started that last. We, we started that last year for the first time and it was much more successful than we thought it was going to be. Student use of it has, has been outstanding. It's twenty-four seven where students can get, you know, tutoring support.
I remember you spoke about that. Yes, yes. All right. And you have something for technology installation services?
Yes, and I'm sure Brad will help us with that one.
So I'm just curious what that is. What, what are they, what kind of software are they installing? Like, is it for the Chrome or is it for the, the laptops that are going out to the students?
Are you referring to the $40,000?
Yes.
That is consulting services to have a vendor come in and help with our server infrastructure and network infrastructure that supports our virtual desktop environment. So providing virtual desktops for our employees, for student labs. We have a lot of work to do to improve that environment so that it can support the scale that we're having to provide in the COVID times.
And, and so the tech department that you have at the college, they're not able to do that?
We have a very, very lean staff and we're juggling many projects. So we don't, we don't have the resources to.
Okay. Just curious.
Good. Any, any other questions about that?
This might be a really stupid question, but.
There are no stupid questions.
Do we competitively bid those or other contracts for, what's that called? All these are competitively bid, right? Just to confirm.
No.
All amount like that? No.
Well, no, no. If, if, if there, if, if it can be competitively bid, we do. In, in other cases, there are professional contracts, state contracts that, that we buy through where has already put these things out to bid and we're able to buy off of those contracts. There's also some designated groups like NJ Edge, which is a, a nonprofit technology group set up to support higher education in the state. And, and the legislature has designated that they can be a purchasing agent and they put things out to bid and then we can buy off of, of their work.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, a, a, a little, a garden industry has grown, these different educational services commissions who have done this. Middlesex is one. The one that trustee Poe and Vice President Morton were talking about is the hundred and one. And I've seen that a lot in, in various venues, those two education commissions. They do a lot of bidding, if you will, to get these contracts so that you don't have to prepare specs, you don't have to put it out to bid. It's kind of off-the-shelf kind of stuff, which makes it easier for especially smaller entities, small towns, small boards that have to buy different things. So there are various ways that we can go about this. And I know that Stephen and his team keep, keep reviewing that stuff to keep us in, in, in a, in a good stead.
Even last year, when, a couple of years ago, when we paid, when we finally paved the parking lot in Passaic, we were able to go off of a contract that was out there, which, you know, had a per square foot cost for, for doing, you know, blacktop work. And it, it was cheaper than we could do on our own and we were able to, you know, quickly get the job done by going. And I think that was through the Middlesex County Ed Services Commission. So it, it works. All right. Next item is, and, you know, we, we had to do this last month and I have to do it again tonight. Many of you, once a year, you meet Sandy Levitt, who comes when we do the audit each year. He, he came to the college in nineteen seventy-nine. He's been here ever since. He's been our controller. He, he's the one who keeps the books. Stephen is very upset that he's leaving. But, you know, it's, it's hard after somebody spends forty years at the college to tell them, you know, they haven't been there long enough and they can't retire. You kind of got to let them go when they're, when they're ready to go. So Sandy is finally retiring on, at the end of July and I, I, I think we need to just formally recognize the fact that he has done so much for the college o- over the years that we are, we are going to business. There is no doubt. Stephen, you want to say anything?
Well, you, you know, the, the best way to judge our work is we get one time each year where we're graded. The auditors come out and they give you your report. They're responsible for reporting to the board. And it's always a pleasure and very rewarding for me that we get a clean report. And that's, you know, that's the controller. That's the work of the controller. I mean, that, that shows due diligence is taking place behind the scenes every day. You just see it once a day, but it takes, you know, day after day of quality work to get the job done, to make sure when it comes to you, no stone is left unturned. And so, you know, I'm really proud to have had the opportunity to work with him.
And now as of August first, Stephen will now be both the Vice President, the Controller and the Budget Manager for the college. So.
Congratulations, Steve.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's taken on a little extra work at this point, but I, I think I have the record. Because in nineteen ninety-six, I was Vice President of Academic Affairs, Dean of Enrollment Management and Acting President of the college at the same time. So that, that may have been the, that, that may have been the, the, the worst that anybody had to do. I, I don't think we need an executive, executive session tonight.
That's what I was going to ask. Do we need one?
Mike, do you see any reason for one?
No, unless there's any questions on the personnel agenda.
Yes, I, I just have a question, personnel.
We should go into close, we should go.
Appointment.
And we need to go into closed session if we do that. Okay, let's.
No, I just, a general question, you know, just.
Sure.
The general question, the question.
For the appointments, you know, why, certainly there are no blacks, it seems like, Holly. I just, question, you know. Are they applying or anything? Are they applying for some of these positions?
I am looking at the group. I, I know that quite a few of the child development teachers who are being appointed tonight are, are African-American as I'm, as I'm looking at the group.
I'm looking at the list and it's just before, so I don't see, I, I don't see one name.
Yeah, look. Obviously, you know, Jose, do you want to, you want to jump in there?
It's, it's, it's not fair to make a to speak about this on, based on, on the, on just a one-month board packet. What we can do is we can look at the statistics overall of the college and, and I can get confirmation on that. Be more, a more fair representation than just looking at this month's board and then starting the discussion from there.
Well, yeah. I would like to do that.
Okay.
That probably will get you.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, Barbara, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to fire that, please. All right, we're going to call the, we had no executive session, so we're going to call this to order as the meeting of the whole. It's called to order at seven thirty-eight. The board did not meet an executive session to discuss any personnel contract matters or matters protected by attorney-client privilege. Evelyn, can I have a roll call?
Sure.
Yeah, we don't need one there.
You don't need one.
Okay. May I have a motion on resolution number three, the consent agenda, items A through C.
So moved.
A second, please.
I second it.
Roll call.
Trustee Duham?
Yes.
Trustee Marco? He left. Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Poe?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanniff?
Yes. Are there any remarks? Oh, go ahead.
No, no, I, I just wanted, I just wanted to note, two, two people who are at the meeting tonight were part of the personnel packet tonight, and I just wanted to congratulate them. We have Enrique, who's, who's on, who's our new Director of the Educational Opportunity Fund, taking the place of Michelle Softly, who we recognized last month, who is leaving also after forty years at the college. So Enrique, congratulations.
Thank you.
And Chris Muller is also on the phone, on, on the meeting tonight. And Chris is the one who organizes these meetings for us. And he is taking on more responsibility as well in the IT area of the college and, you know, I, I'm not sure how we do things, especially in the last couple of months without Chris. He's, he has stepped up in ways that, you know, all these meetings that work almost flawlessly, he has a lot to do with. And we're, we're very thankful for everything he's doing. So if you happen to be here tonight, I wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate you. I thank you for taking on more responsibility.
No, thank you, Dr. Rose. It's always my pleasure to help out.
We know that. And that's what I've got.
Okay. Do we have any remarks from the trustees?
Are we going to do something for? Are we going to do something? Oh, sorry, go, go, yep.
Michael, do you have any v- email?
No, this is, Al Moody, I have one question.
Oh. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I guess, last month, the June meeting, I had asked a question about, you know, the SGA.
Yes.
Need, you know, about the members and so on. Someone said it was supposed to get back to me with some kind of report because I'd asked, you know, why would there be no representation of blacks on SGA, what's going on? So someone was supposed to get back to me. I haven't heard anything yet.
I, I know you spoke to our Dean of Students Sharon Smith, who, who had. Sharon Goldstein, who had, who had spoken to you at that time. I, I'm, I'm not sure what she was supposed to get back to you with. I will find out and we'll make sure she gets back to you with it.
Okay, she was just for the, explaining to me, I didn't know, you know, folks were not interested in what was going on, you know, you know, why we need not.
I mean, we, we have, we have, you know, through the years, we have had African-American students as, as part of student government. It just happens. The officers this year were, were not.
Yes.
But, but it's, through the past, there have been. I mean, it's just, these are elected by the student body. It's the people who, who choose to run for these offices and obviously we. Get involved. But we do have some very involved African-American students at the college who take on a lot of responsibilities. So it's just not this year, not just not this year in student government.
Good. Okay.
Any other remarks?
Can I just chime one thing in? I guess that I, I hear, after hearing about on the student side, I just want also for everyone to, just to let everyone know that until the pandemic hit, unemployment was at an all-time low. And our, our efforts in terms of recruiting minorities and people of all sorts of backgrounds is, is documenting the fact that we, we, we post our ads in different sites with that goal in mind. Among, among our, the places that we, that we post on is HERC, which is a, a regional, which is nationwide, but regionally, their main focus is diversity with people with disabilities, veterans and, 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 and all sorts of, of backgrounds. So I think it's important to note that the advertisement efforts are there. But I'm not, I'm not going to say that they'll always pay off, but the effort of the college is always there. With that in mind, I, I will follow up regarding the, the report on our, our current standing in terms of diversity.
No, I, I haven't seen a report in a few years, but at one point, probably two, three years ago, I, I think we had the second most diverse workforce of all colleges and universities in the state of New Jersey. You know, no one had more diversity on their workforce than, than we did. So we're proud of that. We still want to do better, but we're, we're proud of that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Public?
No, no.
Michael, do you have anything via email?
No, nothing.
Okay. Hearing no other comments. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move it.
May I have a second? Nobody wants to go?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Duham?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Poe? Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanniff?
Yes. Thank you all for coming and see you soon.
Thanks, everybody. Hopefully one of these days, we're going to get back to having meetings in person. That's.
Yes, we're all looking forward to.
That is our goal. That's even going to be, that's even going to be.